Basically, what we'd like to go over today is, all of you are aware that the DDA bought the property at forty-four twenty-two Williamson, which was the former old gas station, Hammond Gas Station, or before that, there was another owner, I believe. And then DNS bought that, and then we acquired it back in November. Tanya from Spicer and I are working on some site development plans for that location. Whether it be restoring it back to the old gas station, a pavilion, something to tie in with the bridge. We are putting some site development plans together that we're gonna present to the DDA Board to ultimately make the final decision on what we want to do with that property. Tear it down, whatever the plan may be, ultimately, the DDA Board will decide that. We're probably not gonna do anything this year, might be two years, who knows? But, come on in, sir.
Dad's here.
Oh, that's your husband?
Yep.
Okay, Dad's here, okay. I thought you were gonna run the board. Me. You're gonna leave on that. So while Tanya and I have been gathering some information and been down to the site a couple times, it was brought to our attention, or to my attention, that there was people that were on Facebook, residents of the Bridgeport area, that would like to see that building go back to the original gas station look as it was in nineteen thirty-something. We had a meeting at our last board meeting, we put a public meeting notice together, we went on Facebook, we invited people to come to the DDA meeting, and we didn't have anybody show for that meeting. Obviously, tonight Carla and her mother has shown, other than board members from DDA and Township. And Tanya, and this is actually Carl Hammond, whose dad was the second owner, I believe, I'll let him talk here in just a minute. So we basically, we put it out there, it's been in the paper twice, it's been on Facebook, Carl has a lot of following on his Facebook page, I believe you put it out there a week ago, and I'm a firm believer that if anybody has something that they would like to present to either the DDA, or to the Town Board, whoever, that we should listen to our residents and communicate with our residents. Whether or not we make the right or the wrong decision, I'm a firm believer that everybody has a voice, and everybody should be heard. And again, ultimately, the DDA, when we present some site development plans, will make that final decision. I can't do that, I just gather the information. Pretty sad that there's nobody here, other than Carl. And at this point, I had talked to Carl the other night on the phone, and he has a vision for that property, I'm gonna let him talk a little bit about it. I also said that, you know, we need to know where funding's going to come from, are there going to be grants that will be written? So we have to get major, the cost of what it's gonna take to either turn it into a restaurant with the old motif, or whatever, so. That's what this meeting is about, and obviously, not much participation, so I'm a little disappointed there, so. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Carl, and you can let people know what your vision is, and we'll listen, and then that will be presented to the DDA Board when Tanya and I get A, B, C, D of our site development plans for that property. Okay?
First of all, I'd like to thank Steve for inviting me here tonight to have a moment of your time, and I appreciate everybody showing up and listening to some of the things that I have to say. I do realize that I'm not a member of this community, I was for a long, long time, I worked in this community, starting, I started my career at Bridgeport Auto Gas at the right old age of about five. Both my parents worked in the community, so on the weekends, when they were busy doing things, so somebody could keep tabs on me, it was either I worked with Mom, or I went to work with Dad. Well, Mom worked at the restaurant, and if I went over to the restaurant that Paul Danes used to own, going way back, and then it was Allen's, where the hardware, is it the hardware store now? Now it's an ice cream store.
Right.
Okay, now it's the ice cream store. I would have to do dishes. Now, I could go over to the restaurant with Mom and do dishes, or I could go over to the gas station with Dad's, where all the old timers and everybody in the neighborhood would come in and talk and that, and then I could pump gas and wash windows, and I could do what the guys, so I decided that I would do that. I literally grew up in that building. I started there when I went to Bridgeport Junior High School, which was the old junior high school that sits over there, and the country club was there. I literally walked over after school, walked over to the gas station, worked there, until Dad went home for dinner, and he went home for two hours of dinner, and he would take me home, then I'd do my homework, and we'd do that all over again. I did the same thing all the way through high school, so I have a very passionate connection with that property. Dad purchased, or Dad acquired that property in about nineteen fifty-eight, when he leased it from Herman Haas and Walt Preeter, and Herman and Walt started that business in roughly nineteen thirty-four. It has always been a service station slash tank wagon delivery business. That set at that property, and I did bring some pictures that I have, I don't have pictures of nineteen thirty-four, when it was originally built, couldn't find them. But this right here is a picture of approximately nineteen fifty-six, and there is three gentlemen that are sitting, standing in the picture. One is Bruce Pop, who worked for my dad at that time. The other one was my father in the middle of the picture, and the other one was the owner at this time, is Herman Haas, or, excuse me, Walt Preeter. Herman had passed at this picture time. My thought was when I heard that the Township had acquired or became in possession of the building, I had a conversation with a former employee of mine, or employer of mine, who was still a very, very good personal friend. A couple of us in this room worked for the same gentleman a few years back. And I knew Ron was involved, and the gentleman I'm talking about is Mr. Ron Goldbach, and I knew that Ron was involved with the DDA. I had some conversation with him, and I was asked a few years ago to put on a presentation at the Bridge dedication, and I was honored to be able to do that. And we talked a little bit about the site, what was gonna, what was gonna happen with it, what their plans are, what some ideas were, and we went back and forth, I talked to a few other people, and there was a lot of good ideas that I heard. I've heard somebody, some people were saying that we'd make a livery there, so they could start a bike thing there and go off on the bike pathway, which I think is a great idea. Some other people said that'd be a great place for a restroom area, so people could actually park their car there, and if they had to use a restroom, they could use it as a restroom. And again, that also is a great idea. What Bridgeport Township has done with that area, with the Historical Society and the historical area, with the park, should be commended. I understand that there were some problems during the renovation of the bridge. Hopefully, that has been remedied. I was involved a little bit in that, and had some input and some information on that, because I was probably the only one still alive, other than Bud Gilmore, and I think Bud's still alive, that was present at the time that the bridge got closed and all this transaction happened. But with all these great ideas, when this property became available, I said to Ron, I said, "Wouldn't it be a great idea?" And it was just my thoughts, 'cause I have some prejudice towards the property. Wouldn't it be a great idea if you could utilize that to work into the historical area that you have? Because that whole area, and Lamp Lighters Flower Shop, that's a historical building also. That was Aunt Elma's building. And my grandmother worked in that when it was a general store. And they sold Levi jeans where you couldn't wear them for two weeks, you'd have to wash them, because it would wear the inside of your leg out, or the backs of your calves raw, and you could literally stand upon. But with that, I said to Ron, I said, "Wouldn't it be a great idea if we could actually, if the Township could actually take that building and utilize it, if you wanted to utilize it, there's two buildings there, if you wanted to utilize it for a restroom or a staging area, you could do that with one of the buildings? But with the gas station itself, is to take it back to the nineteen thirty-four, thirty-five, early forties motif, decorate it out, use it as a calling for the Township, a mini museum, if you would? And if you wanted to make it functional, you would still have restrooms there. So that would give functionality and a purpose for the property." Now, him and I talking, I'm involved with Sanford, Michigan. I moved up there in nineteen ninety-three, I've been up there because my parents had a place on the lake, so I wanted to be close to Dad as long as he was alive. So, at being up there, I've been politically involved up there. I spent eight years on the Village Council, I'm on the ballot again for November, so we'll see how that goes. I made two staffs at running for County Commissioner, and two staffs running at State Representative. There will be another time in the future that I will make that attempt again. The times weren't right, so I've had some experience with being involved with Townships and cities and villages. Matter of fact, I headed up the project, for the downtown improvement project for Sanford, and if you've ever been through Sanford lately, there's been a one point two million dollar renovation downtown, that was my project. I made a huge amount of money on that, because I was a college member, we got the normal pay of around fifty dollars a meeting for every month. With that project, we were talking, Steve and I were talking about, if this was something that you decided to do, it's always about money. How do you fund it? Well, if you do something now that is a renovation, or into repairing, or bringing back history, the, I'm trying to think of the word, the nostalgia that goes along with that, there's also a lot of groups out there that have funding available, and there are several of them in the Midland area that I've worked with, foundations to donate for that. And if it's a historical, then you go to your State Representative, your State Senator, your Congressman, say, "Okay, where is the money at?" And you ask them, get them involved. Because there's a lot of money out there, and unfortunately, nobody likes to tell you where it's at. But with that, I know several people that have written for grants, myself, I have written for grants for this downtown project, and acquired a quarter of a million dollars towards our project, so I've had some experience with that. And I told Ron, I would be willing to provide my time to help get funding for this, along with some other information that I could present from my past experiences. But with that, it's entirely up to the Township, and I was hoping that we'd get a lot more people here. I put out to my contacts that I was going to be here and make a presentation, and I asked for support. Now I have to call my sister up, and she were out, you know, she live five minutes away. So, this is my thought that I had for that particular property. Now, I've heard a lot of other, I've heard ice cream stores, I've heard canoe liveries, and that are all great ideas, some things that I've heard. I just wanted to make the presentation to the DDA on what I thought could be a benefit for the Village, Bridgeport itself, and that's just some of the input I have. I do have some pictures that I brought to leave with you, that I made copies off of, these are the ones I could find. Like I said, this picture is from about nineteen fifty-six. A little prejudice about this one, this is about sixty-one, when, that's my dad Les Hammond. I think this was right after he purchased the property, or just before. And then, this one here is a little bit newer, this one's about seventy-two, roughly, I'm thinking, that's Roy Jones's car, and he bought that brand new in sixty-seven. That's his sixty-seven Ford that he bought brand new, and I think he was seventeen at the age of that time. But this is around seventy-two, seventy-one. And it gives you just a little bit of look at the progression of the building, and I appreciate it if you want to take a look at it. I'm gonna leave these with you, 'cause I have these now on computers, so I can generate them any time. That's pretty much all I've got.
Can you put the dates on those apart?
Sure, I can write them down.
Can you write them on it?
Sure. That's about fifty-six, this one, I believe, is about sixty-one, and this one is seventy-two, roughly. The years may be one or two years, Pop, that's pretty close to my recollection. The originals, I'm trying to find.
They're on hold, too.
I'm trying to find the originals, but I have sisters, and, you know, some of these nostalgic pictures, they don't like getting up.
You thought you had sisters, was it?
Well, I kinda thought that I would have, you know, there's two of them that are still in the state, that I thought, and I do have a few friends, believe it or not, in the area that I contacted, and I can see how many.
Mike Kosty.
Yeah, you see how many showed up. At least I thought I had a couple of friends. Does anyone have any questions?
I got a couple.
Sure.
After talking to you last week, for about an hour or so, I did a little research, and I understand that you owned that building, and you sold it in nineteen seventy-seven.
My dad owned it.
Your dad owned the building?
Yes, my dad, yes.
Okay, so he was still living then in seventy-seven?
Yes.
Okay.
My dad lived up till nineteen ninety-nine, yes.
Okay, so then he sold that building to Maryland.
Holloway Fire Protection.
Yeah, Holloway, yeah, Maryland Holloway.
Yeah.
I guess I, the reason I asked that was, is you had said tonight, your passion, you grew up there, your passion was there, you went down there since you were age five, I was trying to-
Figure out why they invited you.
Figure out why the building got sold by your family in nineteen seventy-seven.
That's a really good question. I, I wondered that.
So, yeah.
If some of you are old enough, you remember, we had a little problem back in the late seventies, that we're still dealing with today, on a regular basis, on a daily basis. It's called Iraq and Iran. And at that time, there was a takeover of the Iran Embassy. The Iranians overrun, the embassy took our hostages, and I think there was two hundred and twenty-six hostages at that time, hence the first oil embargo for the United States. Some of you may remember, some of you may not be old enough to remember where you couldn't buy gasoline. My dad's station was privately owned by Les Hammond. His distributor was Bill Webb, a Webb Oil Company. Bill Webb, at that time, owned several distribution stations across the tri-county area. So when the fuel came in to the distribution station, his station got the fuel first. Well, that left Dad, as an defendant, with no ability to buy fuel. So now he went out and freelanced and tried to buy fuel for wherever he could. He also, he bought it from Elmer Hemlick, Heimlich, or Hammer, who owned a carpool company at the time. If you go back to that part, remember that. And during that period of time, Dad also had a tank wagon delivery service that he would service farm gas, and sold to all the farmers, the Suttles, the Youngs, the Sawaskis, were personal friends of my dad's, and came to the house about once a month and played cards. So all the big farmers out there, we serviced. It got so bad that we couldn't purchase fuel, things were getting bad. So in seventy, seventy-six, seventy, seventy-five, seventy-six, I turned twenty-one. At that time, I went down to, Dad was struggling, I went down to Franklin State Bank, which Dad had done business with forever. John, I can't think of his last name now. I can't picture his face. I sat down with John in his office over here, they just built the Franklin State Bank here in Bridgeport, 'cause we used to go to Franklin every Friday to the bank. I'm thinking of his Wagner, but that's not right. I'll think of his name. John was the president of the bank, I knew him as John, I didn't know him as Mr. Wagner, because Dad was personal friends. I sat down with John, and I said, "I wanna buy Dad out. I wanna buy the business." Dad was stressing at the time, he had big diagnosed with Doc Shaheen, with type-two diabetes, was having some health issues, I said, "I wanna buy the business." It was a big sum, it was, it was a huge amount of money, it was seventeen thousand dollars to buy the business. Now Dad would stay working for me, but all the pressure would be mine, he would be my PR man, 'cause Dad was a great PR man. So I wanted him involved. So we would sat down and talked about it, and John, John said, "Yeah, that's not a problem, Carl, I just want your dad to co-sign for you." I said, "No, you don't understand, I don't want him responsible for this, I wanna take the burden out myself." And he said, "What do you got for collateral? I got a business that's been running since nineteen thirty-four. You got the property, the business, use that as the collateral." And then, well, we could get the shares. That was the biggest disappointment in my entire life, I've lived with that my entire life. So with that, I had no other options, I could, and to, later, after the fact, Doc Shaheen was a personal friend of my dad and myself. He was at my dad's funeral in nineteen ninety-nine. Doc Shaheen chewed me out, when he found out later, that I didn't go to him and ask for help. You know, I was twenty-one, I knew everything, didn't know anything. Hopefully, that gives you a little background of why the business got sold. In the meantime, prior to the sale of the gas station, Dad sold off the tank wagon fuel business to Elmer Hen, Hensler, Elmer Hensler, lives in Freeland, on Freeland Road, just east of the airport. Farm's still there, I don't know if Elmer's still alive. Dad would be ninety-five, was born in nineteen ninety.
Elmer's no longer alive.
Elmer's no longer, okay.
I know the Henslers.
Okay, well, Elmer purchased that part of the business from Dad, so he could stay afloat for another year. At that time, my sisters would go in and work for free. When I was working at Go Line's, I would go over and work when, so Dad could take a break, the whole family was involved, but we just, there was no way to keep it going when I left there, so. That's why the business got sold, and that was the biggest disappointment in my life, so hopefully, if I come to you today, maybe I could make a little retribution of all what I couldn't help but couldn't do at that time.
Wow.
Any other questions?
You forgot to mention how long your family's been here. Eighteen seventy-two.
You know better than I do.
Eighteen seventy-two.
And my great-grandfather, great-great-grandfather came over, and the Hammond Homestead used to sit between Moore Road and Gable Road, east of Doorwood Road. The Campbells have my grandfather's homestead. Uncle, Uncle Howard still lives on the corner and is still alive, and he is ninety-two years old. Just took my grandson over to see him last summer. Art and Bar, my cousin lived behind him, they just sold, I think they just sold that house, and they're now in Florida, and every time I turn around to see them on Facebook page, they're going to some other amusement park, and some other place of interest, and I'm still working. But that's where the Hammond Homestead was.
Do you have any of the old memorabilia, or anything like that, from when your dad owned it?
I do.
Or is that all gone, too?
I do have some pieces from the station that I would make available as a museum piece. One thing I do have is some you probably never remember, but if you look at this picture there, it's not on this one, you can't see it much on there, but you can see in that picture right there, it used to be what they called a tire meter. And everyone remember, they're cast steel, they stand about this tall, and you used to crank it up to whatever pressure you wanted to put in your tire, and then you'd put it on the tire, and it'd go, "Ching, ching, ching, ching."
Tell them your age, Carl.
I know. When Dad sold the building, I pulled that from the station, and I have that in my possession. When I owned my body shop, my body man and I restored it back to original, it still works today. I have it inside my garage. I have some of the other memorabilia's, there's some antique equipment that I still have that I pulled out of the-
Any of the gas pumps, or anything like that, or?
The gas pumps, they were, when we sold the station, in the back garage. Now, I don't know, okay, I don't know what ever happened with those.
Probably know where they are. Pardon? I said, "We probably know where they are."
There was five of those in there, one was the old globe type, which-
I think there's a gentleman, a tall line or-
Twelve one in the picture there.
Yeah, the tall one, there, there was a globe type that you literally hand pumped the gasoline up to the top, and then you dispensed it into-
Tower line off of Bell, Tower Line off of Bell. There was a gentleman that buys, he might pick this up.
Yeah, they're probably worth a small, worth, because all those, when Dad, well, Dad got sick, real sick, sold those, when he closed the business down, he just wanted to get rid of everything.
You know, are there retro pumps available?
Yes. Yes, there's a place on Lansing, I know for a fact, that I could duplicate them, and I think I know where there's one of the original. I think my cousin ended up with one of the originals. And I'm sure, with a little persuasion, I can get that donated back.
There's a big segment that sells it.
Yeah, I know there's a big organization off of Old Twenty-Seven, just north of Lansing, that did restorations on the, on the east side of the road, so. And if you wanted to really see, when I tell you one that really impresses me, is many of you probably been through Franklin, on Gira Road, north of Franklin, with the farm, and I-
I was just gonna ask you about that one.
I literally took pictures of that, 'cause I go by there, and I, by the way, I'm on a bike right now, and I go back and sit and lament about the days. I spent five years at Bridgeport Standard with Ron Goldbach, so there's a lot of history on that, on that block.
I just got a question, I, you know, I think what may need to be restored somewhat, and then the inside, you know, to make it all bathrooms, I have a quick time, and it wouldn't have to be that way, I'm just, I'm just thinking, and then I'm thinking, if there's, you know, so you advertise on the expressway, or whatever, see the bridge, and then they get off at the expressway, and they come to see the bridge, and I wonder where you parked?
Well, we have the parking down to, oh, excuse me, what is it, southeast, that we put in?
The DDA parking lot.
The DDA parking lot that we put in.
Ex- the flower shop.
Ex- the flower shop. We put in fifteen, sixteen, fifteen or sixteen, pardon, is there.
Oh, okay, okay.
Now-
Yeah, that is there.
Now, if-
And you know that the DDA is looking for other ones, too.
This is just a thought, and with the, and you're right, with the bathrooms in that being inside the small building, that might not be the best plan, but you also have the back building, that's a really good-sized back building, and that's where I learned how to work on cars when I was fifteen years old, in that back building, with no heat, above two lights, I think there were candles.
Probably use the river when you handle the bathroom.
That was, that was the option, because there was no bathroom in that back building. Yes.
That wouldn't work.
That was a good old-
No, and Aunt Elma's house used to be right across, it's no longer there, it's where the levee is, but there, Aunt Elma's house used to be Elmo Poppy's, it used to be right there. And when I built my race car, and it was in the black garage facing her house, and I fired up at eleven o'clock at night, I didn't get a phone call, 'cause we didn't have cellphones at the time, but Aunt Elma would walk over and knock on the door and going, "Do you know what time it is?" "I do now, it's time to shut this thing down."
I have a question, Carl.
Sure.
Obviously, if you owned this building today, I see you probably taking on this project and following through with a dream, is kinda what I heard today. If in fact, we go that route into restoring it, putting a bathroom in, doing whatever, are you willing to do some research work? I'm the DDA coordinator, I work on a part-time basis, and then when I got Tanya working with me, we're getting charged through Spicer, so everything is all about money, too.
Absolutely.
And fitting things into the budget, and if this were something that was presented to the DDA Board, would you take your vision, and you just said you did a one point five million project up in Sanford, so obviously, you've been kinda through a little bit of this, would you be willing to get costs together, get everything together, and then present that to us, and then we figure out- And then we figure out, okay, how are we gonna go and get the money? You know, are you gonna write a grant, are we gonna have Spicer help run a grant? Because, to be honest with you, I don't know if I have that time right now.
Sure.
With all the other things that are going on, and.
Well, let me see this publicly, I see what you're asking, Steve. I, I, so everyone here understands, we've had a conversation, and Ron Goldmine had a conversation, and made these commitments to these two gentlemen. If this was something that the village of Sanford was deciding to do, and the township was deciding to do, I offered to lend my support and my expertise in what I have done to go out and help find grants, to help write the grants, and to come up with the locations to help fund the project. I've been successful with it with Sanford. Hopefully, November, I'll get re-elected to the board, because in my absence, the projects that were started, unfortunately, because people aren't paid to do them, like you said, it's volunteer, most of it. Time is a big issue. And I made it, I made it my time to do that, so. You know, sometimes those are the things that, money doesn't mean anything to you, it's what you can do and leave behind. So I, I would, I would make that commitment to township that I would do everything possible to make sure that this was a successful project. I would put the time in, I would help look for grants, money.
Work closely with me.
And work with you, and with Spicer. Because I know that engineering firms have some connections. And expertise that I don't, and there are a lot of foundations out there, and I found out by, by working with the Midland Area Community Foundation, the Girstaker Foundation, the A.H. Dow Foundation, the Skrostaker Foundation. When I sat down and made the presentation to them for the downtown improvement project, I had people that could coach me and help me. I have the ability to speak, but sometimes I need to know what I'm talking about, so. It helps when you.
You can tell you've been talking.
Yeah.
Who said that?
I worked for the car for a few years.
No, I'm telling you, feel the love in the room, you see how many friends.
Daryl's all about love.
I gotta say, you see how many friends I have in the room.
Why's your face so red, Daryl?
I'm just saying, so I thought I'd say it for Carl.
Yeah. But there's a lot of things out there, and if you go to Bay City and travel to Bay City and see what the restoration's been done in the waterfront, you look at what's done on the older homes, there's money out there available. Just gotta go home and try to find it. They don't walk up and say, hey, you're doing that, here's the money. You go out and make the pitch. I was fortunate enough, we had Wade Trimmer that was working with us on the downtown road project. We paid them forty-two hundred dollars to write two grants. They acquired nineteen thousand six, nineteen, yeah, nineteen thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars of grants. I wrote two grants and acquired two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I wrote a grant before in my life, but I had a coach. And the coach helped me. And then I had another coach, and then I stood in front of twenty-one people from all these different foundations. A PowerPoint presentation, yeah, presentation, now it's scary to me, but we got two. And we got a quarter million dollars.
What was that quarter million dollars, I think, I don't know what that project was, but.
We did a three, three-block downtown restoration of the downtown area, where we went down to the original, took the road, bed out, which used to be old US ten, that runs right through Sanford. We had a three, we started with a grant from M.D.O. For roughly eight hundred thousand dollars. That was the original money, and we had to match that by twenty percent, bring that to the bill, and the village had to match that. We had to pay for the engineering cost. The president at the time took his project on, he started running with it, we got that grant approved to us and awarded to us. When he started finding out how much work it was, he resigned. And that left the project with nobody, we've already had the commitment, and somebody said to somebody, somebody's gotta stand up, and nobody, everybody took four steps backwards. And there I was. So I, it, it was a two-year project with us. We went back and took the roadbed back to original. It's a thirty to fifty-year repair on the road, so the road won't have to be touched, it was re-engineering sewers. And we put in decorative lighting, which are LEDs, and did that whole downtown scape. The total cost was one point two, it went way beyond what the budget was, so we had to acquire other monies. The LED lighting, if you ever look at that alone, our lighting for our downtown area with thirty LED lights, it went from fifteen hundred dollars a month to a hundred and forty-three. That's a considerable thing. Fixtures were a lot more, but with that, we got grants from, Consumers Power even came in and pitched into the project. So there was like several other entities. It's just putting it all together.
Currently, the DDA is maintaining that property, because we own it. I'm going to be shutting off the water, in fact, they went in there to try it, and it's full of bees, so we have to call a, exterminator to come in, because Ruth Ann said they were just all over, particularly in the old building, in the older part. But we're gonna shut the water off, we're gonna winterize it, and basically, we are maintaining, the DDA is paying for the landscaping, the maintenance around it and stuff like that, along with the bridge. If this were something that you would spearhead and work with me on this, and, and whoever else that wanted to, to make this project go, how long do you anticipate something like this, to get back to the pictures there, through grant writing, through memorabilia, through whatever? Are we looking at a two-year project, a three-year project, a five-year project?
Well, looking at what happened with the downtown development project, it was about a year, putting the ideas together from the, from the conception of, let's go out and do this. Is there money available, so we went out and found out there was money available. Once we found out there was money available, the big hiccup we had, it drew into two years, because when the road was surveyed at one point in time, and recorded, somebody transposed a number. So when they come through and resurveyed, we were encroached on private property. Well, that meant, because we were actually on the private businesses' property, we had to get easement rights to that property to tear it apart and rebuild it. If anyone, and we did it wrong the first time. I'm not blaming anybody, but the people that supplied me with the forms and the information wasn't what M.D.O. wanted. M.D.O. said, you have to offer fair market value for that, you have to make that offer. If they want to donate it, that's fine, but you have to use this form, we did it wrong the first time. We made me, because I didn't know. So I had to do it twice, so that put us one year back on letting for the job, so. I figured it, it probably would be about, first thing you do is go out and work for money. You had, first I had.
Three years.
We had three years.
Thank you. I'm trying to guess and see how long.
You're probably looking at a year to come up with your ideas and get funding, and then, you know, some time to design and.
And just one other question that, okay, if you take the building, or the buildings, and you put them back to the original look as much as you can on the outside, to me, it makes a lot of sense to utilize the inside of the building with a restroom, or something like that, so. And I know that would have to be handicap accessible, and they would, so you're, you're talking probably quite a bit of money, but my first thought would be, if we made the outside look good, you really should have the inside that is usable and tangible for somebody to be able to.
Sure.
To use. Particularly if we get the trolley going, or you know, the thing with birch run, and, and going back to Fort Road, and people can ride their bikes. You gotta use the restroom, just like the canoe launch. The police can open it at eight and close it down at nine or ten, or whatever hours that we.
And you could do the same thing, and if you wanted to use it as a restroom facility, just use the motif back for the, the late forties or thirties.
Right.
But it, make it to coat, and you're gonna have to, if you do that, you have to make it to coat.
Yeah, you gotta go, state guidelines, all that stuff. Help the property.
Yeah. But that would be an excellent move, and that would be, make it a usable facility, but still have the motif, kind of like Frankamove, you know? You, you can build a McDonald's in Frankamove, as long as you follow our guidelines and make it look like the rest of the community.
Okay, my last question would be, would you take both of the buildings and bring them back? Or would you just do the front building and knock the other building down and green space that a little bit? I mean, what is your kind of vision? Because the, the front building, obviously, is what people are gonna see.
Right.
I mean, would you redo both buildings, and then what would you, what would we utilize the inside of the other building for?
Now, that's something that I didn't have an answer for. There are some other ideas that I heard out there, somebody said something about running a restaurant out of it, or an ice cream parlor, making, making it into that. You know, have this is the showplace, this is the functional building, you know, but if you use this as a restroom, that would be the functional building, but what you wanna do out there? You could do the buildings, could be utilized for something else.
But I don't know if the DDA would wanna get into the business of leasing and.
Yeah, that would be entirely.
That far.
That would be entirely.
That run into, I mean, the DDA, I think, would want that to go into like a pavilion-style park area.
That's kind of what Tanya and I have been talking a little bit.
The blocks, you know, etc.
So that, the building wouldn't be any use to, to the DDA or fall, fall into the plan?
The front building, I don't have a, I don't think the DDA would have a problem, but the back part, you know, as we go, we're always, we're talking about pavilion park style.
True.
Well, Tanya and I have talked about that originally, is if we were gonna take down the back building, or both of the buildings, to green space it, to use the columns and the fencing that's all around, tie that bridge area right in, benches and everything, and have a pavilion overlooking the water with some grills and possibly some restroom out there, so you're exactly right.
Because if you.
You could do that.
A lot of people use that area right now, go there. All right, it would be nice for us to put an attraction for them to get under when it rains, or they have a little party or something.
That would, that would make perfect sense, then, then you have a focal point that, oh, this is cool and see, but then you have the use of the river. And I like the idea of, matter of fact, I'm making a pitch for Sanford. It's gonna be another project of mine, because I wanna see a marina put on Sanford Lake.
Okay.
I'm just wondering, how much property, what is the dimensions on that piece of property?
I knew you were gonna ask that.
It's probably seventy or eighty foot wide, but it varies, and you're probably talking a hundred and twenty foot.
How close is that big building in the back, where does that sit? Does it sit on property?
Kind of in the middle, but closer to the.
It's almost, matter of fact, there's been two discerning problems with that piece of property when the survey was, was done, when Wayne Goldmine bought that.
House.
House, because they did the survey from the north, and he owned half of the building. When we did the survey from the south, we owned half of Wayne's house. So what they had to do is sit down, that's a true story. So we had to sit down, when he bought that building, we had to sit down, and we had to go, this, this line right here is the recognized line, they had to draw it up, that that was the recognized line. Because literally, it came in half the building, so.
So if that big, if that big building in back was on, can you move something back further, maybe do like a, make it look the same?
Oh, yeah.
Do the bicycle type thing there? You know, is there enough room to do?
Yeah, there's, there's quite a bit of room.
Like Tanya says, it's, it goes like this, and then it kind of goes, and it.
Wides out towards.
Wides out right towards the river.
Not real wide, but a little bit wider towards.
Probably double though.
No, I don't think so.
From the bridge to, over to that person's.
I don't think it's twice as wide.
Okay.
It, it is quite wide though. Don't tell.
Something else we could, we could consider too, just a thought. Thirty-some years ago, maybe, yeah, but we camp up in Illinois State Park, and down the road, there's now a large restaurant there, off the road. And when we first went there, that was an old house. And they had converted that into a restaurant bar. And they had a pot millet stove, and the chimney going off, and bricks and all this kind of stuff. Well, after two renovations, it's, it's now log cabin style, but they left chimney in there. And I know when Daryl was mentioning, I know we were talking about a pavilion-type thing, but if we could maybe take the existing building, the big one, and leave part of that structure there, I'm just thinking, no. And knocking out parts of.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
In the same, like, part of the wall there about this height.
Yeah.
And then an opening to go in where people could, you know, pick the tables or whatever, still part of that structure would be there.
Yeah. Because it's a stoked structure, I, I've been over there several times, and look at it, to still be standing after this many years can be.
Got a basement. Well, where they went down, where we thought they did oil changes, it's like three levels.
Yeah.
You got the basement, and then, I think you and I were in there, Rose, and then you got this level, and you go up the steps, and you got a little thing up in there, so.
Yeah, and the basement's only under one, one part of it.
Yeah.
Because when I worked in, in, as a, as a young man, and cars in there, you laid in the water, because there was no drain. And so when you grabbed the trouble light, you were definitely in trouble. And then the other buddy grabs a hole, and he was in trouble, and the third guy says, there, no way. That's a true story, that literally happened, so there was two of us just sitting there shaking, and he reached over, pulled the plug after we were there for a few seconds. But yeah, that's a good idea. The idea, you have the waterfront there too, and to use that to entice the people to actually come and weigh the waterfront, because now, you know, the Cass River's not bad, like, a little different than it was when I was a kid, because Dad said, don't get in that water. We'll never get it off you, you know.
Blow in the air.
When you fence that, can't you fence that, river bank?
No.
Well, what I, what I foresee of it is an overlooking for the river, and actually, you could put a rail up in it, and they could actually use it as like a border mark. And that's something I'm presenting for.
I would think four or five-year-old, three-year-old, when they run over, mother, you know, they're, she's going to look at something, and they come out, and head for the river, and down there.
Well, what we did at, what we did in Sanford, when we built the fishing pier, it's, it's up about ten feet off the water, and it, it jets out. For the fishing pier, we actually have fencing up around it, and we have slots where, it's handicap accessible, so they can go in and actually fish on it. So that they can't just get through and fall off the water. But there's ways to do that.
I have a question for Tanya. If we were to do that, what Daryl suggested, and what we, we, we've kind of talked about, where you put a pavilion up, and you use those columns, and we kind of tie that whole thing in there, and do the front of that, would, could that all be part of a grant writing?
I hope so.
With, now you got the historic bridge, you got the historic front of the gas station, and even though the pavilion would be new, and the other would be new, would we be able to bundle that?
If you incorporate the old building.
Yeah.
The building part of it, that would still be.
That's what you're, yeah, that's where I'm going with it, with Augie.
Two thoughts that I have, and one is, if it were to become a park under Bill, it could get DNR trust fund grant funded. And it would be recreation-focused. If it were to become, well, it has a transportation component, it's a historic gas station. It deals with, and so where I'm going with this is that there's M.D.O. tap grant money. And just like your bridge money was focused on historic preservation, I don't know this for sure, I just, I'm throwing it out there as an idea, it, it could be historic preservation money through the tap grant. We did, when I used to work for the city of Lansing, we did a restoration of an arch, you know, normally those tap monies are focused on trails and roadway beautification and that type of thing, but there is the historic component. We restored a, an old arch that was originally constructed in Durant Park in the city of Lansing. An arch, you think, oh, it has nothing to do with transportation, but you get creative about how you write the grant. The arch was built by William Durant, who was the founder of General Motors, and we put that spin on it, and it was funded, and it's restored. So you put the, you put the spin on it in the grant about, you know, it's an old gas station, and you, you go through that whole relationship to transportation.
And you can tap in two, two or three different areas.
Yes.
What's that?
You could possibly tap in two or three different.
And being close, and being right there on the river too, then you, you can go with.
Right, and the bridge.
With, with the bridge being there, we got funded through M.D.O. on that, you know.
Right.
As far as the rail going along there, you could incorporate something that would complement the ridge.
Right, you certainly.
You can submit the wrought iron and that. The wrought iron and that kind of stuff.
Yep, and another thought is that, I mean, on the river, you know, John talked about you have to have a railing. No, you don't, but, I mean, you could think about doing a fishing pier there as well. If you were gonna go for a DNR trust fund grant, point wise, point wise, you would want to do a fishing pier, you want to get that fishing component.
Right, because then you could go into.
Right.
Edenville Township just did a, I don't know if you're aware, but just did a project up north of me and the young lady that helped write all the grants for him, they literally got that and it's handicap accessible and it goes down. The bank's probably forty feet.
Thirty-five, forty feet.
On that, on that part of the river and they worked it all the way down. That entire project, if anybody's been up there and seen it, was entirely funded by grant money. And it was in excess, I think, five hundred thousand dollars, the number. And I happen to know, I'd be good friends with the lady that wrote all the grants for us. And she, she's going to help me with the projects in Sanford, so that's another asset that I have. My experiences with Dow Foundations and Social Foundations plus hers, because I think it was DNR, or, yeah, DNR. Trust fund money that paid for that. Yeah, it's a nice, it's a nice access for Edenville because they had nothing from the water.
Let's keep those pictures in there.
Yes, that's why I brought them. And if I find any more of them, we will give them to you.
Because we can incorporate that, a whole piece of property on some type of couple visions, present them to the board and then start writing the grant.
Daryl said too, if you incorporate that riverfront into the project also, now you open up some other areas for.
You could have possible four different taps.
You've got, and you said too about the rail trail, the money for rail trails is huge. Kim Hallard from Middle County is a good asset to have.
He just wrote two of his grants.
Yeah, well, yeah, Kim, Kim gets money. And you know what, people in Middle County get so upset about the Parks and Recreation Director, Kim Haller, because he's out looking for money and we've got a beautiful rail trail. And the comments we're at the, at the county board meeting is, how come you got such great rail trails and our roads suck? Because we got a guy that goes out and looks for money. And it doesn't cost you anything, so it's about where it's, you know, you're aware of it quite well.
Can't spend that money on roads.
Yeah, yeah, that's what they said, why don't you spend it on roads?
Where would you suggest that you really start with something like this to get, you know, set a deadline that in eight months, we've got something here to have, we look at, four months away, and then somebody draws a few pictures and see what we can do with any material that upon, start over again and add to this and add to that?
Well, and what you would have to do is, is as a, as a community, come together with a focal idea, like Daryl said. And Steve said, come up with a concept of what you think that it should be and then work with the engineering staff and go, okay, what would that look like? Because I can't draw, I could fix anything in the world, but my artistic ability is zero. I can't draw a picture, if I had to draw that, I would be in trouble. Get an artist conception of what it would look like and start there before you go into actual engineering of it. And then you have a visual, and for Steve and the DDA, then they would have a visual plan before you even get into anything to get public support.
Yes, yes.
And I'm gonna tell you what, that's number one. Whatever you do, you want to have public support behind you.
I tried tonight. I think the first step we have to do is come up with a plan.
Yes.
What we wanna see out of it, but then the next step we have to see is, okay, who can we tap in for grants? Then we hit the public.
And I would say, I would say from my experiences, you wanna get somebody else's money to pay for the whole project.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we come up with the idea.
And to answer your question, Augie, on this, on this one point two million dollar project that we did in Sanford, we did that, it cost the village of Sanford four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of that one point two. Two hundred and ten thousand dollars was the engineering cost. And we had that money in the bank, so we did this without levying any special assessment or increasing any millages or causing any detriment to our businesses in that area. It cost them nothing. We actually took over by doing this project in the contract on the, to get the easement for the property. MDOT required us to not only reconstruct, but maintain the new construction. So what that meant to our business owners, they no longer had to take care of snow plowing or snowmobbing. And someone very, very astute on that and said, you know how much money is gonna send me a year, Carl? And all but four of the thirty entities donated the property rights. So we only had to pay about three, about three thousand dollars. And the one we had to pay for because it was owned by a bank and they couldn't get a board meeting fast enough to get me to get the approval to donate, so we had a lot of support there.
I think in your question, John and Daryl, I see where you're going with this. I think what's gonna have to happen is, and I'm glad that we've got the DDA board in good representation here and the township board in good representation here. If you, if we wanna move forward on this, the only way I see it moving forward, because nothing's free, is with my lack of experience and I need to have, and you said you don't have some of that in with the engineering part.
Oh, no.
What'll have to happen is Tanya and I, and we can meet with Carl whenever we can meet with him, he's free, I can use him free, okay?
Just have Spicers go meet.
But Sp, yeah, but Spicers.
You get a lot of that.
Yeah, Spicers is not free, so probably what the DDA would have to do is we sit down with Tanya and Tanya say, okay, to put together a couple different visual things and whatever, you guys are looking at five thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars. And then I would have to go to the DDA board and ask for that money, get it into the budget and then that allows me to spend the time with Tanya. Because those ten hours right now that the board has approved, I don't waste those hours and I sometimes need her expertise in keeping day-to-day operations going. And this being a project, I think should be a whole different aspect with me kinda helping and working together, but we allow so much money to do that. Then the grant writing and all that can start once, once we've put that together. But I need save money to, to get Tanya to start putting blueprints together, plans together, whatever.
And I think if we're gonna save, talk about saving those buildings, that's bigger than me, I, you know, I need to bring in our architect and have him look at, you know, if you decide to save the back garage and turn that into a pavilion, is that feasible? Or can you tear that down and build something that replicates that?
Yeah, he stands out with just a few ideas and can you put it on a piece of paper, the thing looks like this, looks like this, and then, but then he's got another idea on his own. I would do it this way, then we can begin to start to pull it apart and now it looks like.
Correct.
That's how you start.
In order for me to give the DDA board something to look at or town board, we gotta start as artists using our heads and then you got all the other people, but.
But even to do the artist conception, see, I guess I'm very practical and so I can draw you drawings all day long. But if we're gonna go for grant money, you need to know that that's a feasible thing that you can even do. I don't, I don't ever wanna put you in the position where we've given you ideas and concepts and plans that aren't gonna work and you don't have the money for. We need to do that upfront and, just like the bridge, we did an inspection before we wrote the grant to look at it and say, okay, this is bad, this is bad, this is what we need to do, so.
Take a break, okay? You know, you give me that mic, I'll never go home.
Tanya, can you, can you imagine, I mean, could you draw these, just drawing, say that's what it's gonna look like?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we can draw it. I also wanna, you know, with that drawing, we usually put together cost estimates and the cost estimates have to be, you know, if you wanna save the building, here's what it's gonna take. If, if you wanna save the back building or, you know, turn it into a pavilion or whatever you wanna do with it, here's what that cost is gonna be, because you can't, you can have the vision all day long, but you gotta have the practical costs and feasibility to go with it.
Well, the first thing the DDA's gotta do is decide what they wanna do.
Right, and I think, you know, there might be a couple ideas that are thrown out, so, or not thrown out, but put out.
Yeah, and that's kinda why I'm glad that we've got some DDA representation here because the other board members that are not here, you're going to have to convince them or talk to them about, hey, we had a good meeting, do we wanna follow through on this or what do we wanna do? Because we got four of you right now on the DDA board that the other six aren't here. Can it be done, can there be a vision? Yeah, I think so. And I think we work well together and, but again, we gotta get the approval to get, to get it going and there's gotta be some funding.
Is there a need to get that surveyed, do you really know what is the law?
Eventually you'll need a survey to figure out where your property lines are.
I do have a survey.
You have a survey?
We had a survey and we also have the environmental survey from when we bought it. So I have the baseline and then the phase one, phase two and the baseline that's already been sent to the state with the, so that's been all done.
Yeah, we have that.
Yeah, remember we had to pay for that?
Pay for that.
Yeah, so we had to reserve it or we had to survey that and then do the environmental survey before we did it and I have that on the desk.
Is that a boundary survey or is it topography?
Is it from the.
Boundary would be your property lines, topography is the lay of the land.
Not an engineer, but I'll check that. You and I'll check that out, is it vertical or horizontal?
Whatever you want it to be.
Yeah, make it what it needs to be.
Think you have enough info to bring to the board?
I think so. I think we have enough, as Daryl said, and then the board's gonna have to kinda chip in on that. I don't, do I have that on the, yes, I do, I have that on the agenda for the meeting next Wednesday. Yes, because it had to do with the donate growth.
Yeah, you do, number two.
Number two, under old business, yeah.
Public meeting update.
Public meeting update. If everybody can sign into for me so that I can let the board know or, yeah, who all attended the meeting and stuff like that. I will just have to talk about it at the next meeting. But are you in agreement, Tanya, for us to move forward? We're gonna have to get some type of money to have you start working on something.
I think so, I think it's best to separate it from the general, to keep that cost separate.
I knew Daryl was gonna say that.
I'm selling ya, yeah, I'm gonna sell ya.
The guy that said sell, sell, sell.
Yeah, here you go.
Okay, anybody, I wanna thank everybody for taking out their time and coming out tonight. Carl, thank you very much, all right?
And since he's not the artist, you can just kinda sketch out some of the concepts of what you heard tonight and you can just kinda.
I gotta guess.
And I made a few, yeah.
The wheels are turning, they never stop, but, you know.
She's thinking about that sell. Okay, any other questions before we wrap it up? Thank you.